Okay. The board completed their executive session with no action taken. We'll go to reading communications.
We have the county auditors, March 2024, report of real property tax corrections. Letter from Fitzgerald Morris Baker Firth. It's a notice of real property transfer from the Warren, Washington County IDA to LG Plaza LLC in the town of Lake George. And we have a letter from the town of Lake George and a copy of an oath of office confirming the appointment of Vincent Crusito Jr. As town supervisor effective April 9th, 2024.
Okay, we're going to reading resolutions.
Resolution, I'm sorry, proclamations 13 through 18, resolution numbers 112 through 152. Certificates of appointment four and five and floor resolution numbers one and two were distributed to the members of the board of supervisors and posted to the Warren County website on Monday, April 15. The proclamations before you are number 13, National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Number 14, Crime Victims Rights Week. Number 15, Donate Life Month. Number 16, Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Number 17, Law Day in Warren County, and number 18, Mental Health Awareness Month. Before we get to the floor resolutions, on resolution number 133, that is amending the local law for combining the HR and civil service departments. The date in the local law needs to be updated. In the local law, it says April 22nd, but we're appointing to that position April 19th, and I would like to make those consistent. So if we could just get a motion to amend resolution 133 to change the effective date to April 19.
Motion by Supervisor Gilligan, second by Supervisor Bruno, any discussion? All those favor?
Thank you. So now a motion is needed to bring floor resolution number one to the floor.
Hey, who would make that motion, bring floor supervisor E2, second by supervisor Thomas, bring floor resolution number one to the floor. All those in favor of floor resolution number one, signify by saying aye. Close.
Floor resolution number one is now resolution number 153, and you need a motion to bring floor resolution number two.
Floor resolution number two. Motion by Supervisor Bruno, do we have a second? Supervisor, second by Supervisor E2. Any discussion on floor resolution number two? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Close.
So floor resolution number two is now resolution 154.
Request for recusals, does anybody need to recuse themselves from any resolution? Okay. Okay, we'll have public discussion on any of the resolutions. Anybody from the public wish to discuss any of the resolutions, please step up to the podium. And let us know your concerns or thoughts on any of the resolutions. Anybody?
Hi, my name is John Berry, I'm the treasurer for the Warren County Historical Society and historian for the town of Queensberry. This young gentleman here is Dr. Stanci Infro, who's the co-president of the Warren County Historical Society. And the county historian, yes, sorry. I've been asked basically to create a proposal for the organization of the Joseph Warren Museum, which I have done so. I've distributed a couple of copies and Supervisor Cavlin has it to be able to distribute to all of you. This is a basically a template for the organization on how the museum would be run. Who would run it? Where funds would come from? It's in five sections, there's a cover letter, I have an organization section, a operational section, a proposed first year budget. And I have also included a section on how it would be scheduled, the mundane things of running a business. In essence, it's a business proposal. I made this deliberately to be completely edited, because obviously no one's idea is going to be the final word. My hope is that you ladies and gentlemen will read it when you get it. And send me your comments, which will be incorporated into a final budget plan. To synopset for you, we plan on running this very similar to the way the Warren County Historical Society is being run. The question has come up as to who would be financing, who would be running, who would be doing it? We would, after the, probably the initial phase of this operation, be running this through the auspices of the society. So the county itself would not have to appoint people, run people. And that is what we have, and we got everything? I again ask that you just, when you get a moment to look at this, infer with me on your ideas and suggestions. I know a couple of, a couple of the supervisors already have, and I thank them for their input. But again, this is, this is a starting point as to how we're going to run this. I think once the construction were to begin and go, we can now start the infighting amongst ourselves as to who's going to do what. But at least it's a place to start and may answer some of your questions. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the board?
Thank you, I'm Town Councilman Jim Niles over in Lake Luzerne, and I also have the honor of serving as deputy supervisor to Supervisor Molino. I'd like to encourage you to support resolution 132. I think it's pretty much a no brainer, it's to hire a company called Granicus to help us chase down short term rentals that are trying to fly under the radar. As a town councilman, over the last couple of years, I worked to put a short term rental agreement. Resolutions together, we passed it last spring. We've got 60 were permitted last summer. We have six or eight that the process uncovered as unpermissible because of code violations. And then we have another five or six pending. Last but at least, I'd like to thank the zoning enforcement offices of Warrensburg, Bolton, Lake George, and Queensberry for sharing their legislations with me and helping me and giving me advice to put that together. So please support 132. Thank you. Good to see you feel better, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the board in front of public on any resolutions? Openly from the public, okay, now we'll go to board members. Supervisor Molino, you had your hand up first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A little perplexed on some of these resolutions, 142 and 143. And as you know, at the meeting of the budget and finance, I voted against it. And if you lay them side by side and read them, the amounts are 800,000 coming out of OCTAX. And there's another one for 200,000 coming out of OCTAX. I mean, that looks like a million dollars to me, that's coming out of occupancy tax fund for the building. I'm not against the building, but I think way back when our OCTAX committee was working on moving forward, and I know there's a couple of and I'll admit it, I must have had a brain freeze while I was talking. But it was really, and I think the treasurer is here too, so we had talked about it at OCTAX to give 200,000 right away to help them. And the budget officer, not the budget officer, treasurer, had said that there was 200,000 put aside in this year's budget for, to start this program. The way I'm reading these things here, it's 200,000 now, and then 800,000 over the course of a couple of other years. I was under the impression, and maybe I'm wrong, and I admit it, I might we were talking, Frank was there and we had asked Frank, and he had said that the treasurer had two, OCTAX was going to put in two. And the other six would, could possibly, he didn't say it was, could possibly come out of the general fund and then be you know, so much a year for two years or three years. This is totally different, and I just, I'm confused because these two resolutions are already committing a million dollars. And if I can, maybe Frank or somebody else can help me out with this a little, I'm just, I don't understand it.
Supervisor Runyon, you're next.
The way I'm reading it, it's saying 800,000 is going to come out of the general fund. And then over on this side, 200 from occupancy tax, and the other 600 will be reimbursed to the general fund from OCTAX. So we are right back to the 800,000 from OCTAX and 200 from general. It's just that we're going to be paying it back over time. That's the way I'm reading it.
Did you want to comment, Frank?
Yeah, sure. I think Supervisor Runyon explained it the way that the two resolutions are. As far as what Gene heard during his occupancy tax committee meeting, it was my opinion that, that we should split it 50/50, that general fund should pay 500 and that OCTAX should pay 500. But again, that was my opinion.
Supervisor Wild.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. When I think of all the resolutions that are in front of us for the Warren Center, and the presentation that was just given us today, that if we look at this from a business perspective, if I were running a business not knowing what the business plan was, prior to committing a million dollars, would be heresy. Why would we commit a million dollars if we have no idea what the financial aspects of this are going to be, other than to create some museum? I'm not going to make any comment about whether the museum is a good idea or a bad idea, but we need to be stalwarts of the money that we're entrusted with. Why would we support this with going forward? I can't. And as a matter of fact, I'm willing to find other ways to make that happen, and if we need to, I can go into some more presentations, I got a couple of slides I can talk about. But let's think about this. Are we making a solid decision today without all the information we need to make a solid decision? And as a result of my thought process, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to table this. And maybe we have to come back for a special meeting some other time, but table this until we all get a chance to look at this business plan and make the decision that we're expected to make, which is a good decision. So hopefully someone will second this and we can table it and move on.
Do we have a motion to table by Supervisor Wild, do we have second by Supervisor Bruno? Are there, is there a discussion?
There is, but I would suggest that in your motion to table, you include all of the Joseph Warren resolutions.
Are you making a motion to table all the, all the resolutions to go with the museum? Would you concur with that? We'll have discussions on the motion to table. A discussion on the motion to table. Supervisor Runyon.
Table it until when, because isn't this a time sensitive ordeal?
Clarification.
Well, you would need to, in the motion to table, we need to clarify.
She told me we already got 100.
Can you give a little more clarification on which?
I'll give it to the OCTAX and the finance, next table, OCTAX and finance meetings.
But are we prepared to table it for the next week's meeting? Do we have enough information, will we have the information?
I certainly hope so.
Well, that's, OCTAX is next too, this coming Tuesday, today's Friday.
So are we going to have enough information to be able to determine that? There was a presentation in front of us for some additional information about how this is going to work.
Yeah. Why don't we, why don't we make a motion to table it to a joint meeting of OCTAX and and finance? And we'll do it, hopefully we can do it prior before the next personnel meeting. Yes, but when we're going to have the committee meeting, joint. We'll schedule a joint committee meeting before the next, plenty of time before the next board of supervisors meeting. Is that agreeable?
That's agreeable.
Supervisor Thomas.
Yeah, a question to Mr. Haggles as to how that affects the bids that are currently.
I just sent a text to Julie to ask her, I believe we extended the awards for the bids for 60 days. I just don't know what that date brings us till. So once I get a response from her, I'll let you know.
Is, is next week an issue, Kevin? If we table this for next week?
So, but then to be approving this through a board meeting, you'd be doing it next month, that may be
I, I think the board is, is diligent enough that we, if we need to, we can get the information we need, still have a special board meeting.
I can always call a special board meeting if we come out of a joint meeting with enough people satisfied to move this forward, so we don't have to wait a full 30 days. Is that agreeable to your motion? Is that agreeable to you?
Yes, but, go ahead. My understanding, we're going to get, we're going to get additional information.
Yes.
When we see it. Business plan, what have you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, I've talked to a lot of you, a lot of you know that my concern all along has been, after the museum is built, who's going to run it, because I don't believe the county should be responsible for hiring employees to run the museum. I received a presentation Mr. Perry was talking about last night, we looked at it, it's a starting point. And I think it kind of shows, I think the issue before us, as you're looking forward, is estimating how many people will visit the museum at a certain entrance cost. And that's going to be the, the point that's going to drive, you know, how they hire staff to run the museum. So I think it's, I think he's given us a good starting point, Amanda has a copy of it, she'll send it out to you. You'll be able to look at it today and make comments on it, so.
Okay, end of discussion.
I'm just sorry, but I'd like to see a total, exact list of what it's costing, because I'm hearing I mean, we had, we put out money already, or now it's changed to a million 80,000. I mean, I hadn't heard anything about that, so can we get a list of what we're going to be looking at and then worry about where it's coming from?
Do you want to go ahead? So first of all, I just talked to Julie, the date for we extended it to was May 24th. So I believe the next board meeting is May 14th.
We'll accommodate the date.
We'll have time. As far as the, the cost, when this started, Frank, probably a couple of years ago now.
Three years.
Two years ago, we, there was some initial money that Frank had budgeted for, and I think that we discussed in committee. And everybody agreed to that we would budget to support moving this project forward. Last year or the year before last, we also, they had requested ARPA money, so we put ARPA money for it. So originally, I think Frank had budgeted, and we, it was agreed upon for 50,000 for the facility. And then, once we had the consultant's proposal back for cost, it came in, I think about 150,000. We negotiated with them, got it down to 140,000. And up to this point, which got us through bidding, we've only spent 95,000. But there was 80,000 put in there from ARPA as well, so a total of the 80 and the 50 was what was put in the bar, maybe I think it was 80, I think it was we had taken money out of the, the contracts code and eventually put it in there, which was like 12,000, so I think it was 100, 162 total or 152 total, but we've only spent 95 of that.
Okay, I'd like to get back to the discussion on the motion to table. Supervisor Driscoll, you had your.
No, I, my question was, I thought it was the evening meeting in May.
Supervisor Strau, you had your hand up, did you have anything more?
Yeah, well, this particular discussion, according to protocol, is just on the motion to table. Yeah, I have a lot to say about Joseph Warren, but it seems like I should reserve that for a later date.
Okay, Supervisor.
Yeah, I, I certainly don't object to the motion to table, particularly if we haven't resolved whether we're going to finance half of it or more out of occupancy tax, I mean, I think that would be good, whether you support, which one you support is up to you, but I mean, we should have some resolution out of committee on that. It would seem to me, there's plenty of precedent for this, for example, we financed the five-year capital plan for Cool Arena, $100,000 a year out of occupancy tax. It's just one, one small example, there are other examples of use of occupancy tax in, in this, in this fashion. The organizational question is, at least to me, is relatively new, relative to the discussion exactly how we're going to organize for success, I'll be interested in hearing back from our ministry.
We're going to cover all the, the motion to table.
The motion to table, so.
Ben, did you have something?
I think this is important, Mr. Haggles mentioned that Tuesday, the 14th is our annual evening meeting, yet our agenda, our, our calendar says that we meet on Friday, the
Calendar's changing.
Seventeenth, pardon me.
I believe the calendar is.
Last month, you changed the date of the May board meeting by amendments to the rules of the board, so it will be on Tuesday, May 14th at 10 a.m.
Okay. Okay, so let's, let's go down to motion to table, Roqaboe, please.
Okay, so this is on the motion table, resolution 142 through 148, to send all of them to a joint meeting of the occupancy tax and finance and budget committees with the intention of coming back with a decision for the May 14th meeting.
Okay, Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Patchett?
Yes.
Mr. Drossy?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Crusito?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Strau?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. Strainer?
Yes.
Mr. E2?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayday?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Ms. Gilligan?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
The motion to table passes.
Okay. All right, thank you for the patience, is there any other discussions on any other resolutions in your packet? Seeing no discussion, we'll vote on resolutions.
Sorry. Resolution number 138, appointing members of that around the community college board of trustees. If somebody could give me just a little, a brief background on these two individuals. There's nothing here, and I'd like, just like I said, a nodding acquaintance with the two of them, if I'm going to vote to approve them for this, this board. Does anybody?
Mr. Chairman?
They were recommended by the college supervisor, Wild.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, that, that is, it was the recommendation by the college, they were, in my recollection, vetted by the board. And this is something that the board of trustees for the college does on a annual or semi-annual, bi-annual basis, something to that effect. So this is not out of the ordinary.
Their recommendation.
Yes.
I'm okay with that, thank you.
I think it was vetted to committee.
Yes.
Any other discussion, any other resolutions? Okay, we're going to vote on resolutions.
Okay, resolution 142, making supplemental appropriations. Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Patchett?
Yes.
Mr. Drossy?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Crusito?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Strau?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. Strainer?
Yes.
Mr. E2?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Excuse me. Mr. Conover?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayday?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Ms. Gilligan?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with 913 votes in favor. Resolution 113, amending Warren County budget for 2024 for various departments within Warren County. Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Patchett?
Yes.
Mr. Drossy?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Crusito?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Strau?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. Strainer?
Yes.
Mr. E2?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Mayday?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Ms. Gilligan?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with 113 votes in favor. Resolution number 133, enacting local law number two of 2024. That's to consolidate the Departments of Human Resources and Civil Service. Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Patchett?
Yes.
Mr. Drossy?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Crusito?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Strau?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. Strainer?
Yes.
Mr. E2?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayday?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Ms. Gilligan?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with 913 votes in favor. Resolution number 134, as amended, that's enacting local law number three of 2024, amending the salary or fixing the salary for the position of human resources director. Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Patchett?
Yes.
Mr. Drossy?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Crusito?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Strau?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. Strainer?
Yes.
Mr. E2?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayday?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Ms. Gilligan?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with 913 votes in favor. Resolution number 135, amending table of organization and Warren County salary and compensation plan. Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Patchett?
Yes.
Mr. Drossy?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Crusito?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Strau?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. Strainer?
Yes.
Mr. E2?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Or Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Mayday?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Ms. Gilligan?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with 913 votes in favor. Resolution 141, establishing capital project H430 covert repairs. Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Patchett?
Yes.
Mr. Drossy?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Crusito?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Strau?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. Strainer?
Yes.
Mr. E2?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayday?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Ms. Gilligan?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with 913 votes in favor. Resolution 149, authorizing appropriation of funds from the occupancy tax reserve for the tourism budget. Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Patchett?
Yes.
Mr. Drossy?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Crusito?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Strau?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. Strainer?
Yes.
Mr. Eto?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayday?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Ms. Gilligan?
Yes.
Chairman Gallity? Resolution passes with nine hundred thirteen votes in favor. Um, um, and then resolution one fifty-four, which was floor resolution number two. That is um authorizing appropriation of funds from the general fund, unappropriated surplus to the Department of Social Services budget. Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Patchett?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Crusito?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Strau?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. Strainer?
Yes.
Mr. Eto?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayday?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Ms. Gilligan?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with nine hundred thirteen votes in favor.
We need our collective, all those favor of the rest of the resolution signify by saying aye. Here, thank you. Now we'll go back to any privilege of the floor or public comment on anything that we discussed today. Any announcements from supervisors?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regarding that joint meeting pertaining to the Joseph Warren Museum?
Yes.
We should probably include the County Facilities Committee because that's on our agenda for next uh April twenty-sixth. So I think the Facilities Committee should be included in that discussion with uh higher education and
We haven't picked the date yet, though.
Right, but I just want to make sure. Got to be.
We'll keep that in mind. Thank you. Any other announcements today? Supervisor Strainer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just a couple of things. I'd like to congratulate the North Warren Boys Basketball Team on their state title. Uh, and congratulate Wyatt Jennings, who uh was the state tournament record for three pointers. He shot nine three-point shots and made them. Uh, breaking the old record of eight, which was held by Joseph Gerard the third. I would also like to congratulate the Glens Falls Black Bears for their state championship title. Uh, they were led by Kellen Driscoll, who was the MVP of the tournament. And for those who remember Ed Bartholomew, uh, Kellen is his grandson. And Ed used to tell us all he had quite a grandson coming up, was quite an athlete, and I think he proved that. Uh, and the last thing is I would like to give our condolences to the McGar family. Uh, recently Bill McGar passed away, and a few months before that, his wife Terry. Uh, Bill was the director of Veterans Affairs here at the county for many years, and Terry was in the uh County Attorney's Office. Uh, they were both huge veterans advocates, uh, and I'd just like to acknowledge that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Supervisor Driscoll?
Thank you, Chairman. I I thank Supervisor Strainer for mentioning uh the McGars. Um, the funeral mass uh for Bill was uh held this morning at eleven o'clock at Saint Mary's Church.[1357.02]